I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Assuming the technology cooperates, we are leaving the science presentation to our next agenda item.
I got it right here. I can connect to the Apple TV. I think I could. Is that it? What's the code? Is there a code coming up?
No.
No, good.
He just has to get to the...
I could hijack it from him, Bill, right in the middle.
Take over the person.
That's right. I could just get him out here. Again, I love school. Hardly a motorcycle. But it's still... Believe in a physics professor, Charlie?
While this is going, I guess I can start.
Yeah.
So, I'm Bill McGaughan. I teach sixth grade science for middle school. I'm also the pre-K six science coordinator for the district. So I just want to thank you for having us come in to present the pre-K through 12 program. If you were to ask me to describe the science program in Churman's Program in a couple of words, I'd say one word would be collaborative. If you were to walk into our classrooms, you'd see kids working in teams to solve problems. I'd also use the word engaging. You'd see kids engaged to promote their learning through inquiry. And I'd also use the word challenging because I think our teachers work really hard to create problems and projects that are really challenging for our kids and get them to develop their critical thinking skills. So those are three words I think were really some of our program was doing well. Over the past year, we've been focused pre-K through six on a few goals. Those goals are aligned with the Board of Education goals. The first goal would be Board of Education goal number four. Hundred percent of our students meeting proficiency on our science state test. And I don't have the graph up here yet. Looking at the 2016 results from last year, ninety-nine percent of our fourth graders met proficiency in fourth grade. Eighty-five percent of our eighth graders met proficiency, meaning they got a three or a four. And then looking back over the five-year trends, we can kind of see that fourth grade has continued to go up. Eighth grade had a little dip a couple of years ago, but we're back up and we're performing above the Bosse's in Central New York. So we're onward and upward and our program is strong. Is this ready to go?
There it is. Oh, and it works.
Right.
So, Bill, was that tip a little transition in the classrooms? Quite a bit of disruption in those classrooms? Was that anything to do with the teachers who were figuring out? What do you think?
I think, you know, I don't know for sure, but I think, you know, we also saw a decline in students taking the science test. We had opt-outs and unfortunately that also translated into science. Even though the science tests never changed, people that were opting out of ELA in math were also opting out of science. So I don't know if that plays a part. Didn't seem to affect fourth grade as much, so I'm not really sure what the...
You know how that numbers went down? This question.
It's a trend, but not a big one.
Okay, so we have a percentage of the population that stills...
We started math for that.
So this is our five-year trends for fourth grade and eighth grade. In addition, we've also been looking at Board of Education goal number five, which is developing horizontal alignment between the grades. So we've done a lot of work with Bosse's in professional development. They've come in. We've worked at dissecting the standards and really engaging our teachers with those standards to see what types of shifts have had to be made. So we've identified a lot of shifts that we're going to have to make for next year in our curriculum to match up with the New York State Science Learning Standards. And in that process, you know, that enabled us to really get things aligned pre-K through sixth grade. We were able to develop a progressions document. And this is a tool that's really going to allow teachers pre-K through five to see, you know, what's being taught in the grade before them and then where is that concept going after the kids need it. So, you know, what types of things are the kids getting to know. Hand in hand with that Board of Education goal is number six, which is expanding on our STEM curriculum. You know, as we're looking at the standards and how we're going to meet them, we're trying to figure out what's the best way to get us there. And so we've been looking at different curriculums. Some grade levels have been trying those out this year. Pre-K is using a program called Echos. K-1 has a combination of mystery science and project lead the way. And then second, third grade, project lead the way in FOS. And then in fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, you'll see a lot of FOS implementation happening.
Yeah, I don't know what any of this stuff is. What is Echos?
So Echos stands for Early Childhood Hands-on Science, which is a program that the pre-K decided to use. I'll talk a little bit about mystery science, project lead the way.
Project lead the way, we know, right? That I know.
And FOS, I'll talk a little bit.
What is FOS, an acronym?
Stands for Full Option Science System.
We're impressed with your knowledge of academics.
Don't ask any others about something too...
Don't ask many questions, yeah. So, before I get to that, so those are the main things that we've been working on this year. And probably the most important, obviously, is really every day fostering that love of science from students. It's natural. They love science. And we're working every day just kind of to keep that going and moving on through high school so they can continue on with STEM. So I'll give you a little highlight of each grade so you can kind of get a feel for what's going on in those grade levels. I might have to look at my cheat sheet here because they're doing a lot of things. So in pre-K, you walk into a pre-K classroom, you might see them raising butterflies and caterpillars and then releasing them or hypothesizing about the inside of a pumpkin and then going and investigating, you know, what that's all about. Like I said, pre-K is using the Echos program. The other great thing about the New York State standards is that they were really adamant about including standards for pre-K, which most states don't have. So we've got some standards for our pre-K kids to kind of get them ready as we're moving on through. So I think that's a great thing. In kindergarten, you walk into that classroom, you might see students working on an engineering problem, like how can they stack a hundred cups in conjunction with hundreds' day? And if they fall over, you know, why do they fall over? And how can we design it better to be successful? So you might see something like that. You might see them exploring the weather, investigating extreme weather events in the community or predicting, you know, what's the weather going to be like on my birthday based on, you know, what the seasons and the birthday is. So in kindergarten, they use a combination of something called mystery science and project lead the way. Mystery science is where they hook the kids with a story, a mystery, and the science is embedded in that story. The students engage with that. At the end of the story, there's a hands-on science activity that really kind of highlights the science concept that's being targeted in that story. So that's kindergarten. In first grade, you might see them designing sundials and then going outside to use those sundials and collect data, investigating connections between the sun, the earth, and the stars. First grade is, they've used a project lead the way kit this year as well as mystery science. And they've ordered additional kits for next year. So they're expanding that program really like that. In second grade, students participated in a project, project lead the way challenge to design their own coolers. So they designed a cooler and they built it with the goal of keeping their popsicles from freezing. So they designed them, they built them, and then they tested them. They tested to see if those popsicles stayed frozen or not. And then they could evaluate that at the end. So you're probably hearing a lot of like engineering being woven in through these grade levels. And that's a big change with these new New York State standards. And then also in second grade, oh, they designed a seed dispersal device, something that could disperse seeds, you know, like sod, you know? And then they had to evaluate how effective that was. So, you know, really cool projects. They get the kids thinking, hands-on. And they've been using project lead the way and continuing that for next year. In third grade, you might see them investigating projects involving forces in motion with project lead the way or going in and researching wildflowers and then going to the Monday Wildflower Garden, identifying those flowers and then teaching other kids about them. I see something in the picture.
I didn't send you that.
Next year, they're going to be adding FOS kits as well as part of their curriculum for next year. Fourth grade, they're doing projects like STEM challenges to build catapults to launch candy corns, constructing vehicles and building them that could move like three tiles, four tiles. So just using everyday materials to design a vehicle that could do that. Fourth grade is seeing the greatest shift in their curriculum next year based on these new standards. So they've got quite a lot of work to do this summer to get ready for next year. They're choosing to use FOS, so they're going to be ordering some FOS kits for next year, which the middle school is really excited about because we're using FOS and this is, we think is going to be a great transition for the kids. When they get to us, they've already had some experience using FOS and using that program.
So, Phil, I'm just going to ask what might be obvious to everyone else. Why isn't everyone using a similar sort of program? Why aren't you guys all using different programs? Shouldn't we all be buying kits around the same thing if we're trying to be vertically... I mean, maybe it's a stupid question, but it seems to me that you're purchasing these kits on the open market. I have no problem with teachers making, you know, creative decisions. I like this over the other. But is there no way we can sort of, is there value to all working in the same thing? Or is there value to having this differentiation? Now that you said having the fourth grade doing FOS helps in the middle school, seems to me that's partly what vertical integration is.
You can jump in a little bit too. That's the exact question that we asked and opened. Bill ran a wonderful workshop a couple of months ago, and that was the question we, you know, opened with. Should we all be using the same program, the same kits? And really it came down to looking at the standards as opposed to which curriculum or which kits we are using to teach those standards.
Some of the kids think the standards better.
Yeah, and teachers really had preference. You know, some teachers said, "We've been using mystery science for two years." "We love this particular, the video that goes along with it." "It works with everything else that we're doing in our room." "Here's how it's going to build on and prepare them for FOS the next year."
So it's always got some continuity with the way these things are.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because there are a lot of standards.
Yes, and they're all aligned to the standards. A couple of years ago, we, you know, the district we had invested in decided to do some investment in project lead the way. So we sent people for training. We got kits, right? And so, you know, I think it's wise to use that rather than just throw it away and say, "Oh, let's all do something new," right? So we're kind of using that. And I think also with FOS, FOS is really heavy. You know, there's a lot of writing and reading involved in that program. So I think it lends itself more to upper grade levels. I think it would be harder for pre-K, K, probably first.
This is exactly what we want you guys doing, right? This is probably what your conversations as a group are like.
Absolutely, right. Yeah, it was a good discussion, you know, and everybody really had reasons for choosing that curriculum.
And grade levels were unanimous in their decisions too. You know, first grade is using mystery science. All the first grade teachers will be using mystery science.
And people are, you know, experimenting with other things. Like next year, you know, some grade levels are adding FOS. So third grade isn't currently doing a FOS, but they're going to add a FOS kit next year to try it on and kind of see how it fits with their program. So I think they're open to trying different things and just really finding a curriculum that's going to fit the kids and fit the students.
That's exactly what we want. That's exactly what we want.
And then sixth grade, finally. In sixth grade, you know, you'll find students investigating the formation of the Green Canyon, studying erosion, using stream tables and trying to figure out different variables that affect erosion. We're also doing a program called Trout in the Classroom where we raise trout from eggs. We get them in November and then we raise them to fingerling size. And we'll release them into local streams in June. And then new this year is sixth grade team is doing a PBL called Would You Drink It? And it's teams of students, you know, working to investigate water issues globally, but also nationally and locally. And the students are going to have to design some type of product that will allow them to clean the lake water to allow Churman's Program to provide more drinking water for the town. So we're kind of knee-deep in that right now. So that's our pre-K six program. And Michael's going to talk about seven twelve.
And that PBL you're doing is cross-curricular, right? For a sixth grade team.
We're doing a lot of sixth grade team. We don't have social studies work in there right now. This is our first year doing it, so, you know, we kind of built our bus a little smaller than... Yeah, it's a little smaller, so it's manageable. And we're going to, you know, work out the kinks this year. So it's science, ELA, and math.
It's just a great example. Not only do we have that vertical alignment, you know, and working, you know, across.
And I think, yeah, I think you would see that in all the grade levels. You'd see a lot of, especially pre-K through five, you'd see a lot of cross-curricular, or cross, yeah.
Cross-grade, or basically the same. That's important.
Doing the same thing, but, you know, working in ELA, working in math, working in all that.
I did have one question. That is that I sort of heard various points in time that storage of some of the packses can be difficult.
Storage of some of the...
Of the... The kids that they're working with?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. What can we do to help with that, if anything?
I'm not sure. I mean, you know, I've talked to the teachers in the elementary school and I know that project lead the way kits take up a lot of space.
Right.
They also take a lot of coordination.
Multiple use, for example, of some of them, which is difficult.
Multiple use, you know, so it's, it's, that's a big question. I don't know what the answer is. I know like my FOS kits, you know, take up a lot of space in my room. So, yeah, I don't know. I don't know what the answer is.
So some of the space, so some of the space we're thinking about for new STEM space, collaborative space, would that include any storage? For these sorts of things for that STEM thing? So that would be a plug for the new space we're considering moving forward, right? For you guys to do your thing a little bit more efficiently.
Sounds like a positive, yeah.
Okay, good. Fun to hear that.
All right, so I'm just going to take you through what we offer, seven twelve, and what the options are there. We have seventh grade life science. Really neat slide here with the kids doing some birding this past fall. Binoculars donated by the T-Bird Rotary Club. If a student accelerates in science, this is the year also where they kind of have to double up. Okay, so an accelerated student, in addition to seventh grade life science, every other day takes a period of seventh grade physical science. So if the goal is in eighth grade, we're going to take Earth science, a high school class, they've got to make up the physical science curriculum somewhere, and this is the grade where they do that. It's extremely challenging, but these kids seem up for the task, at least the ones that I've been observing.
Mike, is the physical science integrated into the regular seventh grade curriculum? Or it's an additional period?
It's additional period every other day.
Yeah, so what do they, where does that period come from? Or what do they give up?
They typically, Josh can help me out with this. They typically lose, I believe, a study hall. That's what happens.
Most students have two periods in their day that allow for a PE opposite something and then generally like a music opposite something. So students who accelerate usually have their PE opposite, like the extra science class. And then you also throw in chorus and/or band in there so that they don't have the study hall opportunities. Other students who aren't accelerated would generally fill a study hall or a math lab or an ELA lab.
That's what makes... A student that's accelerated could still be in band and chorus?
Correct. But have no time during the school day to work on schoolwork. And that's the challenge. They have time to eat somewhere.
They have time to eat.
I think that's...
Maybe we have to do that.
It's not food in the ice.
That's right. So anyway, they, so they take essentially, they cover the same curriculum that an eighth grader would in half the amount of time because they're taking it every other day for one period. Okay? All right. And here's last year's group doing their group go-bird athletics as studies of machines. If a student does not accelerate, they would just take seventh grade life science and then in eighth grade they will take physical science. And here they're doing some chemistry work, testing some substances. I threw this slide in here. You guys had the opportunity to preview this before tonight. And I know you probably, there's a lot of fine print down there. But this is essentially, this is the handout that we give parents when we have the middle school acceleration meeting. Because what it does is it outlines the three possible paths to a high school diploma in science. So path A is your accelerated student in middle school. Path B, not accelerating in middle school, but you're still going to get your advanced designation diploma. And path C is that kid's that just, that's not the science kid and still needs three credits of science, and here are some possibilities for that. If you have any questions about this, I'm more than willing to come back to this, but I don't want to give you the middle school acceleration presentation because we'd be here an additional, okay? This is here for you.
The important point that I would want to raise for the board to know is that one of the great things about this is that whether you're on path A or on path B, there are multiple options for getting college credit through TC three. So the accelerated students could begin as early as tenth grade taking college chemistry. In path B, you've got kids taking college chemistry in there in eleventh grade. So theoretically, even a student who's in the traditional, not accelerated path can come out with up to sixteen college credits just by taking science classes because chemistry and physics are each eight-credit classes.
And typically, what we also see some of in this, in this second path is that we see kids that double up in high school instead of having to double up in middle school. Because some kids, it just takes longer for them to catch up and for it to click, so to speak.
But some of those things, Mike, like your physics is two semesters, you know?
Yeah.
So that's where the eight credits come from.
So, yeah, they're getting two...
Four credits a semester.
Yeah. And then our accelerated kids are gaining twenty-four, twenty-four credits just in science classes. Because if you take college chem, college physics and AP environmental science...
AP biology would be another eight.
Yeah.
Apes is now six. AP environmental science, so I'm going to cover all that here in a second. All right, so Regent's Earth Science, which can be taken either as an eighth grader if they're accelerated or the preference would be most students coming into high school, not accelerated would take this course. Regent's Living Environment, that's New York State's way of trying to screw up biology. So this would be the second level class, the second level high school course that they would take. Accelerated would take it as a freshman. Non-accelerated would take this as a sophomore. This is the one everybody in New York State has to do. All right, everybody has to take that class. So...
And passive.
And passive, yeah. Then our approach is that once you've completed living environment, once you've completed biology, your options open up. You can go chemistry, you can go forensic science, you can go electives, whatever you want to do. But we really press our kids that they have to have their graduation requirements taken care of first, which is one, physical science, which our science addresses, and one, life science, which is what biology addresses. So Regent's Chemistry, College Chemistry, which we concurrently enroll through TC three, worth eight credits. Typically, most kids are taking it as sophomore if they're accelerated or as a junior if they're not.
Are we having good success getting these, this particular class accepted by most places our kids go?
Uh, that's a...
Do you care to comment on that subject?
That's a tough question.
I know.
The chemistry, it depends on what you're majoring in. It depends on where you're going to school. If you're going to be a pre-med major at Cornell, you're probably not going to get credit for it. If you're a psychology major at Geneseo, they'll probably give you credit for it.
Communication is a major.
You know, it really depends a lot. But you're going to get the credit for it if you go to a SUNY school because it's a TC three credit, so they will honor the credit.
But it may want to be an elective.
But it might be an elective credit and you have to retake their chemistry if that's your major.
It's just important to clarify.
And that's, that's true, the physics, you know. A kid that goes into engineering, they're not going to get credit for it. But I've had unbelievable feedback that they're so glad they took it here first before going there and taking it because they at least had a solid background.
Well, it's assumed you know it when you get there, database.
So again, this was eight credits. Regent's Physics, these guys are looking at index of refraction. And then College Physics, also worth eight credits total for both semesters. Same issue that we just discussed there. One of our electives is Forensic Science. We offer this as Forensic Science one and Forensic Science two, two semesters. So the kids can get half-credit if they want to and then move on to a different elective if they wanted to, or they can take both for a full credit. But you have to take Forensic Science one in order to take Forensic Science two because it's sequential. We also, every other year, offer either Critical Thinking and/or Brain and Senses. This year is Critical Thinking, so next year we'll be offering Brain and Senses. These two are probably, if we're being fair, probably our most popular from a request standpoint, science electives.
And Gordon teaches both of them?
Correct, yes.
Every night at the dinner table is an argument now. Some philosopher's reason why we're having a kind of argument.
Is that because he's taking the class?
Yes, he's in there with Oney every day talking about critical thinking. Comes home and it's at the dinner table. It's very funny. These are the kinds of things that are very enriching for some students, right?
So what you can see back on that path C option is we do offer kids opportunities to get that third science credit without having to take chemistry or physics. We also offer AP Biology concurrently enrolled through TC three. This is also eight credits. And this year, new to AP and environmental studies is the fact that it's concurrently enrolled with TC three for six credits. And the reason that it's six credits is there's just the arrangement that worked out with TC three. They want to go with it for eight.
But it's a two-se semester.
Two semester class, three for each. Three for each, yeah. And that's it? Questions for Bill or I?
Well, maybe more for Bill, but I guess a little for you since you're talking about seventh and eighth grade. Well, maybe more for Bill, but I guess a little for you, since you're talking about 7th and 8th grade. If we had to, if, if you had to design the optimal science lab for 7th and 8th grade, would it look like what we have now?
No.
And, and what would be the difference? Or what?
It needs to be more, I would say more, in my opinion, more functional. Just more be able to move things around. Right now, it is very stationary. The lab tables are in set position. Can fit a certain number of kids around the configuration. So I would say we would need it to be able to be more.
Flexible.
Flexible, yeah. It's not flexible.
In, in my opinion as well, there'd be more space, and there would be technology at each station as well, which does not exist in a current environment. I'm probably the closest in my classroom to what that would look like, because I have desktop computer at each one of my lab stations. But those stations are very, they're, they're not going anywhere, and they're tight to each other. So spread people out, give them some space to work.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mike, I have another big question. Do you have Regent's results, in terms of how kids are doing in science on Regent's results?
Yeah.
For a slide for that, or not?
I don't have a slide.
Okay.
Earth Science, really well, in the low 90s?
High 90s.
High 90s?
Proficiency.
Pass rate is about 95% or higher, on average.
I can speak accurately to Biology, that of all four classes that Gordon and I had combined together last year, we had two failures, one in each. And Chemistry was outstanding.
And how many of those students that are passing are reaching the, is it?
Mastery level.
Mastery level, that's the word I'm looking for. Thank you.
I, I should trigger you. I'd have to go look it up for you, but it's, I, I would tell you that I can say that our science success rate, our passing rates in sciences are our highest of any subject. And in terms of the mastery level, that's a tougher question, I'd have to go and look for that. But Mike's right, I think we had very, very close to 100% in Biology. Chemistry was 84%, I believe, as I recall. And Physics was, last year was.
Ninety-some percent, low 90s.
We had one, one failure. Consistently, we have 100, solid 100% on Physics. But if you look at the numbers of kids taking the classes, that's the other thing that's really amazing, in my opinion, is that we have, between the 8th grade and the 9th grade, you have 100% of students taking Earth Science pretty much every year. You have 100% of kids taking Living Environment, and both of those are consistently close to 100% passing rate. Chemistry, we have, we're now, about 75% of our students are taking Chemistry for their third science, which is awesome. It's really, really awesome to have that high a number consistently enrolling each year for Chemistry. And then to have, again, a very high passing rate for Chemistry is really, that's one of the things I'm most proud of with the Science Department and the work that they've done.
So we'd expect that, without seeing numbers, based on the numbers Bill's showing, they're coming out of 8th grade pretty darn good. Right? I mean, your numbers seem to indicate, just don't mess it up, and you're going to be fine with this, right? At that point, kids don't get.
No pressure on them.
No, but I mean, kids don't get choose very much, right? Up until 8th grade, up until the acceleration occurs, they're taking, everybody's taking the same kind of science, right? And in that model, whatever we've been doing seems to be wildly successful up to the 8th grade. I wouldn't have any reason with what I know about the Science Department without seeing numbers, unless, I would hope if there was a, whoa, we're not good at that, we'd be all over it. And we probably would know about it, like we do in math and other subjects where we're not as proficient. So this is good work, this is good work, fellas.
Thank you.
Yeah, well done.
Thank you.
I need a motion for the approval of Jane Gallagher as chair of the committee?
So moved.
Second.
Out of your favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, but the tensions, passes.
Thank you. Okay, again, I deplore this approval of the election of these chapters.
So moved.
Any questions, you guys?
Just concerned about the alternate, other than.
Yeah, the alternative. So noted.
I'm assuming that alternate is that one of the others can't make it, then your own call?
I usually go up and help out in the afternoon, as needed.
Okay, out of your favor?
Aye.
Make it those two tensions. Congratulations. Okay, now we have to return to the annual budget hearing. Excuse me. I'm Richard Galer, a public hearing for the first list of introduction to Board of Education candidates. And I think we have them all here tonight, do you know? And that would be Anthony Hansen, Joanna Haynes, and Diane Lin. Okay. Anybody interested in making any comments?
I was going ahead already.
Yeah, you just go ahead.
So if we start with Anthony?
Stand up here. Hi, everyone, my name's Tony Hansen. I've met a lot of you, but I have met some of you. We, my wife and my family have lived here, Trueman'sburg, for about seven years. Boys Henry and Jack are in 8th and 11th grade. We've really enjoyed living in the community. Really got to say, the interaction with the school has been very positive throughout that time. I don't want to really be, take too much time, up everyone's time, or be redundant with what I put into the letter. But just to say that I do feel the public school, public education is really important. I think it's a great investment in your community. Investing in kids pays great dividends, because we get better citizens, we get people prepared to go into the workforce and participate in our society. That being said, as a taxpayer, we have to be very respectful of taxpayers' money. Make sure it's spent as wisely as possible. I do have a business degree from Cornell, and ran my own business, so hopefully I'll be able to bring a little bit of that to the board, be able to objectively examine issues. And I guess that's mostly it. Hopefully, I think the most important thing when you have a conflict is always to listen. That's always the most important part of coming to a resolution. So really, I guess that's, that's about it. I'm sure there'll be other questions. My email is in, on the sheet, so if anyone has specific questions, feel free to fire it up. So, that's it.
Great, thank you. I wrote my speech down. Not fantastic at public speaking, I get really nervous. My name is Joanna Haynes, and I am originally from Houston, Texas. And we've been living in New York State for about six years. I have my wonderful husband, Marcus, who works at Corning. And I am a mother to, Nick is in 1st grade in Ms. Glenton's class, and Olive is actually 2 today.
How cute.
So he's singing Happy Birthday, and I'm here. We've lived in Trueman'sburg for about four years, and we absolutely love this community and the people in it, which is partially why I'm here today. I have a bachelor in Business Administration and Accounting, and I've been in financial services for 10 years. I've worked at Cornell in the Pell's Budget Office for three years. And, and I'm currently working at Tompkins Trust in the Corporate Risk Management Office. My work experience, the work experience that I offer will be a benefit to the community, a benefit to our school, and then hopefully a benefit to this community. The reason that I am running, with my financial background, I understand the yearly budget process and endless financial cycle. It's very difficult work. Working in risk management, I understand the policymaking and procedural aspects of an organization, as well as assessing positive and negative impacts to the organization. Being a parent in this community, I want to ensure that children continue to excel. We have a good district, and we can only get better. I know the hot topic right now is capital projects. As I talk to friends and neighbors, you know, everybody has a different opinion on where that goes, but we all agree that something has to be done. It can't just stay doing nothing. As a representative of our community and the Board, and a Board member, I will help find the balance we are all looking for, so that we all vote yes to enriching our children's learning experience. The public will vote for me. I will be an advocate for our children and an outstanding representative to our community. Thank you.
My name is Diane Lin. I am a retired teacher, and I'm from this community. I went to Trueman'sburg, graduated in 1968, raised three wonderful children here. Their last names are Lanson Wood, Lincoln, and Lemon. My grandchildren are in each of the buildings. Lots of grandbabies, all precious, all beautiful. I feel at a bit of a disadvantage, because my working life has been not in this community. And so I invited a dear friend to come and speak about who I am and what I do in education. So, Mike.
On behalf of you.
Thank you.
Ms. Lin, so I'm going to be her proponent, like a puppet.
No, no, you're presidential here.
Ms. Nicholas Nowes, I'm on the Candor School Board. Candor, if you go through Rithika, turn left at the last tip, you keep going to those more cows than people, and we'll run past that. That's Wilsonville, just keep going. We were lucky enough to have Diane as our teacher. Now, I'm a science guy, which is why I was really happy when you were doing the presentation for science. I was a science guy, worked at Lockheed Martin for 38-plus years, and finally retired. I can't believe somebody as young as you retired for me. What I'd like to say is that she was an excellent teacher, no question. A really good teacher, and she moved me. So I'm on the Board, I've been there for 10 years. What I really liked is that she's dedicated to education. She's a Trueman'sburg native, I'm sorry, we can't thank you. But she has this dedication, where she's still going for a PhD in educational leadership. Oh my God, I've retired, I'm not going to do that. I think it's wonderful that somebody would do that. So she's really an excellent person. She was always an excellent teacher. What I liked is the way she brought, she talks about it in a bio, but she brings the egg and the stem to make it stand. So I've always felt, as a physics guy for years and years, that we need to appreciate the arts and to blend them in, and collect the wool. I think it's important. So I see her actually do that with her students. I love, each year when we go to her, her classes would have an art exhibit, where everyone, what she really did is she touched everyone. So even the ones who weren't Picasso or Michelangelo, really felt like they did something good. And she allowed them to be creative. So something you need in a Board of Education, is somebody who blends creativity with thinking, whether it's in school, the students, or in the Board of Education. I admire her for that. She has to be cost-effective. I know that art supplies, you can't reuse them from year to year. You can't, you know, Michelangelo couldn't say it. I'm going to use this Da Vinci painting, because I need to paint. It doesn't happen. Books you can pass on for one year. So you've got to be very prouled, how you divvy up, how you parse it. She's, she's very good economically sound. And she fought for the right artistic environment, shall I say, when your classroom was up, and always being disturbed by some cattle project, and that she was ready. So all I want to finish with is, and I don't want to take your time appreciating for letting you come here, is that as a Board member, I know that there are like four caveats, five, actually. Come in with no agenda. If you have a pre-ordained agenda, you shouldn't be there. Know what your constituents are, she's been here all her life, that's its good. Her family's been involved in all of the educational aspects in this area, that's really. So she knows the area, she knows the people. You have to work with the administration, which I know she's done in Candor. I've always believed that Board members are there to support the administration. We should never be contentious. And then another point is that you have to work on a consensus basis. If you fight amongst yourselves, you look really good at work. But ours is better. If you fight amongst yourselves, I'm sorry. If you fight amongst yourselves, you don't get to get it. If you fight with the administration, you don't get it. We're here for the students. Things are needed for that. I'm sorry, I inhaled a carrot before coming here, and I have my voice on the screen. And lastly, you've got to be able to balance the goals and the program, which do, is with those, the ability of the people who pay the taxpayers. She's really good at that. So finally, I just think she's really good. And if you don't want her, lift her. So she's Lin.
Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you all. And now we need to move on to ourselves, for our final overview. And that would be for the 2017-18 school budgets.
And Jane, if you'd allow me to kind of put a frame around this budget presentation. I think any budget presentation in Trueman'sburg starts and ends with deep thanks to our community. We are able to fund a rich, challenging, creative program for 1,050 students, pre-K through 12, and about 220 staff, and that's all due to the support of our community. So we're very grateful for our community's support. Also, tonight, this is really the last document, and we're passing them out right now, that is the creation of several board meetings now, where we've taken, we've taken the input from our leadership team. You've seen the presentations all year long, much like tonight, from science, where we're doing excellent work with our students, pre-K through 12. And, and then, and we've waited for the state legislature to decide, and the governor to decide how much funding we'll have. And in the end, this is the document that takes all things into consideration. And, I'll go off my computer, this stays with me here, but it's not too happy here. And in the end, this is the document that summarizes the whole process, and this will be mailed out to our community tomorrow. So you're the first ones to have a chance to read it. I think also notably, this is a budget that sustains our programs. Year from now, we don't think we'll have to be looking at reductions, because we've built, we have sustainable funding here. It also helps us settle all of our negotiated agreements, which is really important. This district needs to get these things settled, and move forward, and sustain what we need to pay our staff. And lastly, we could, that crazy tax 2% cap thing, that they say is 2%, really, for Trueman'sburg this year, could have been 2.52, and we're only asking for 1.58% increase to the limit. So again, what thanks for our community to start with and to end with it. I'll turn it over to Kimberly, and she can take you through a lot of the fine print. And you have the brochure and preview, and this is what we're going to go through.
First, thanks for everyone for being here this evening. Michael and I talked about the format for this evening, and leading up to this evening, it's been a series of PowerPoints with a lot of the same information shown and reshown. And so this is a document, as Michael has stated, does go out to the community. And it's actually, many components of this document are prescribed by the state. So we thought it might. So we thought it might be really helpful. All these same points and numbers have been discussed at previous budget board meetings. And we thought it might be really helpful just to walk people through, also have this on the website later on to reference, to make this document more user-friendly. And so you can see, if you're looking at page one, we've captured the budget history. And the proposed budget for 17-18 is 24.8 million. And you can see, if you look at the very bottom, that takes us back to a level just lower than what we had proposed and worked with in 2014, 2015. And as we work further through the document, you understand some of the reason behind that. Looking at page two, this is all very standardized language. These are the propositions that you will see when you go to vote. The first one being just the budget proposition. And really, that's for voters to authorize a district to expend appropriations in the amount, again, of 24.8 million. Second proposition you'll see is the building capital reserve fund. Reserves, as many of you are aware, have a lifespan as well as a cap on the dollar amount. And as such, we're asking our voters to establish a new capital reserve. And the benefit of this is, as we identify fund balance at year-end of every fiscal, we can move additional fund balance into one of these reserve funds to offset future expenses. And I'll speak a little bit later about where some of that fund balance comes from. The next item is the vehicle and equipment capital reserve fund. Same situation here. The lifespan of our current vehicle and equipment fund is coming to expiration, and we'd like to establish one for 17-18, where if we do have additional fund balance, we can move it into that reserve and offset future expenses for buses. The next proposition is the actual proposition for purchase of school buses. And we are asking our voters to approve the purchase of two mid-sized school buses. And we found recently that there is a need for mid-sized buses. And these will allow the district to be more efficient for the smaller runs, where we have fewer students or some of the specialized runs, rather than taking a full-size bus. And the last proposition we place for the library, this is completely separate from the school district. And again, this allows us to just levy the taxes as prescribed here. We take in that fund, those funds, and we send that money directly to the library. But again, it's completely separate than the school district. We don't have any sort of say in that proposition whatsoever. On page three, we'll take you to the spending plan. I won't, I won't read these components to you. This is a piece that is prescribed by the state. Our budget is actually broken into three components, the administrative, the program, and the capital component. The most important in terms of the district components is that program component. And that represents all student-related program expenses for instruction, special education, occupational education, summer school, and any related services for students. And you'll see, looking to the right, that pie chart indicates that roughly 80% of our budget is directly related to program. And that's exactly where it should be. Moving down, on page three, you'll see the projected revenue. And you'll see to the far right, for 17-18, we are looking to increase taxes 1.58% over our current fiscal and levy taxes in the amount of $10.8 million. So you can see that that represents a significant share of our income to offset our expenses. Other local revenues, you'll see we're projecting at about $711,000. A big share of this is what we collect in our Bosse's refund. So we have lines that we establish for our expenditures at Bosse's. And I'll use special education as a great example. We often set aside at least $200,000 in that line just to plan for the unexpected. If we have a high-needs student come into the district, we need to be able to perhaps buy or purchase a school bus driver that can take that child to a specialized program or pay for a specialized program if we are unable to offer those services here at district. So if we don't end up spending those funds, then they come back in terms of a local revenue, which is our Bosse's refund. And we're projecting that next year. It could be as high as $500,000, but again, we're never certain, dependent upon those needs of students. State aid, we're projecting to come in at about 12.9. Much of that state aid is expenditure-driven. Two of those examples would be transportation aid and building aid. Building aid comes back based on our capital expenses. Interfund transfers. Some of you may recall, going back many years, we had, budget lines were overstated prior to my arrival here, prior to Michael's arrival here. And at that time, the comptroller came in and said, "You have too much fund balance, and you need to move those funds into reserves," or in one case, a debt service fund, which acts very much like a reserve, but it is different. And so what they've asked us to do is have a spend-down plan and show movement coming out of either those reserves or that debt service fund. So we have really lessened our dependency on that debt service fund because state aid is coming in at a higher rate than it did in the past. However, it's still our obligation to show movement in decreasing that debt service fund. So we're projecting to take $25,000 out of that debt service fund to offset our capital expense for next fiscal. Medicaid reimbursement, this is, we're projecting at $30,000 for next fiscal. And this is just, we have some services that we provide to special education students, and some of those services are reimbursable through Medicaid. So that's what we're projecting to be a return on those expenses in the next fiscal. Appropriated fund balance, this is a line that I've decreased over the last several years, and this is really a line that is appropriated to reduce the levy. Probably one of the more difficult lines to explain to individuals. It's really a line in the budget that we move forward every year. So if you were to look at every line in the budget, we know that some lines you'll spend to the penny, some you may overspend, and others, and I keep using special ed as a good example because it's one of the best, some of those lines we will definitely underspend. We intentionally build the budget slightly greater than some of those projected expenses, and that is to allow us to move this appropriated amount from fiscal to fiscal so that we don't have to go out and increase the levy the following fiscal to collect taxes. It's a rather difficult concept to explain and understand, but we have been reducing this line over the years. And really what that means is, when I first came here, it was $1.2 million. And so what that meant was, when you looked at the budget at that time, there was $1.2 million within those budgetary lines that we knew we would not spend. And so over the years, I've consistently reduced that line so that at this point, I can reach into the budget lines and say, "I know there's at least $245,000 that will not be spent if all things go well." Appropriated reserves, again, the comptroller likes to show movement coming out of some of those reserve accounts. And we projected $40,500 for next fiscal. That represents about $38,000 to offset our expense for the employee-retirement system and $2,500 out of our unemployment reserve to offset individuals that may be eligible for unemployment.
So that gives us, that pie chart, that makes us just about an average-need district, right? Just that we're almost close to 50-50?
Yeah, you can see it's almost a 50 split between what we-
That puts us right at what I think the state classifies as an average-school district, which I think is unusual in the area we're in. For our region of New York State, I think it's unusual to have an average-need district, right? Aren't we surrounded by mostly higher-need districts? So that's a very important point.
We're in very good shape in comparison to some of our other area districts.
We're much more in need, I will tell you that. We're not needy, we're just higher-need. This is a very good budget, by the way.
Thank you. Can we get that right?
We're recording it.
So moving on to page four, this is where the largest amount of detail is. And so I'll draw your attention, the proposed spending plan is prescribed by the state, as I've already stated, broken into the three components previously discussed. And I'll draw your attention to the far-right column labeled "Change." I did not include here percentages, as percentages can be deceiving. Rather, I gave you dollar amounts because I feel that that's far more telling than a percentage change. So as you look at these numbers, I'll draw your attention to either a larger positive number or a larger negative number. And the first one that we'll take a look at, it falls within the line of business administration, as many of you are aware. We do have a retirement in the district office in terms of our treasurer, and we've shifted the treasury services to TST Bosse's. And so, all things considered, when you take into consideration supplies and salaries and so on and so forth, within the business administration line, we are looking at a savings of about $44,000, almost $45,000. The next line is legal. So although all you see in front of, in front of you is 15, 16, actual 16, 17, proposed budget, and then 17, 18 proposal, we actually look far deeper than that. And we tend to look at three-year spending averages. And when looking at that, it was apparent that we could likely reduce our legal line at this point by at least $11,000 and still meet any legal obligations. Again, that's one of those lines that's really hard to project, so you wanna keep a reasonable amount there just to plan for the unexpected. The next line I'll draw your attention to is fringe benefits. Some of you may be aware, we have had a reduction in the employee-retirement system and the teachers' retirement system employer percentage contribution. Less significant from ERS, that moved from 16.1% to 16%. However, for the TRS, the teachers' retirement system, the employer contribution has moved from 11.72% to 9.8%. It's outstanding for the district at a time when we could realize some savings to offset other expenses. So you'll see that consistently in this three-part spending plan where benefits have been reduced. Moving down, the next item I'll bring your attention to is operation of plants. And here you'll see an increase, and that increase reflects, reflects the addition of a new instructional technology and operations and maintenance position. We've created what we hope to be sort of a hybrid in our district, someone to support both IT and O&amp;M. And also, there is a slight increase there because we replaced an retiree with another individual that came to us with a different, slightly different skill set. As well, there's a $40,000 increase there for the UPK program, or UPK playground. The next line I'll bring your attention to is maintenance of plant. This increase here reflects an increase of $40,000 in the contractual line for asphalt, partial asphalt replacement, and additional monies for security cameras. Number six is quite a significant difference. This is our debt service line. I've spoken many times this budget season about how our debt service obligation or expense is falling off. That's good news for the district. At the same time, the state aid falls off at about the same rate. So we'll see a decrease in state aid because of that, but we are continuing to pay off our debt. The next item I'll bring your attention to is teaching regular school. This is probably one of the lines that we saw the most significant increase in, and in my opinion, that makes the most sense. This is what touches our children and our program. And here we will see, this line includes the addition of our director of curriculum, that we will purchase four days a week from TST Bosse's, and they will have one day a week at TST Bosse's, which will keep them very well-informed to bring the best information back to our district. Additionally, it includes a summer school program that has three summer school aides that'll start July 1 here on our campus, including some library coverage. That represents about a $38,000 increase. We've purchased online tutoring for the, for the students, and John, tell me if I have this correct, for students that are suspended, that are unable to get to a location-
And automatically in need of tutoring services.
Waiting a special aid program.
There's a variety.
Thank you. We've also increased the conference lines for each of our three buildings to allow more professional development for our teachers. Additionally, we are hopeful to purchase two 3D mills, one at the high school and one at the middle school, representing a $40,000 increase. This is a one-time expenditure that supports our STEM curriculum. We're also looking at adding a literacy specialist at the middle school and high school. And also, at the high school, one FTE to help serve our 1511 class. A little note here, I did discover an error. That additional one FTE to serve special, the special education class in the high school, which is 151, should actually be reflected in the line of students with disabilities. Early on in the budget season, it was really just a placeholder. We knew we'd be adding a teacher, but there's a lot of discussion about what department would best suit the needs of the entire district. So once the budget is adopted, of course, we'll move that line, but overall, it does not change the total numbers within the entire budget. Additionally, there was $10,000 factored in for year-round curriculum development. We have heard back from our teachers that they would like to have opportunities maybe over the December break or February break, when they have more flexibility in their schedule to work on curriculum. And of course, this line also includes adequate dollars to cover salary increases for contract settlements. Moving down to students with disabilities, you'll see overall, this represents a decrease. Angie has worked very closely with our special education staff and our building-level administration, and several placements have changed over the course of the last school year. And so some of the programs that we used to purchase slots for out of district at TST Bosse's, we may no longer need those placements because we're able to accommodate those students here. At the April 10 budget presentation, you did hear me say that there is a new need for a teaching assistant, as well as a rather costly placement, out of, out of district placement, in fact, out of our TST catchment area as well. So although there are increases, originally there were significant decreases to our students with disabilities line after the fact. We went back and added a little bit more in to cover some of the newer needs that we've identified. Moving down, computer-assisted instruction. There's increases in this line that cover our IT infrastructure access points and renewed licensing, as well as purchasing the 24/7, 365-days-a-year district-wide network and internet monitoring. That's really troubleshooting in the repair service covered by the Regional Information Center out of Syracuse. We also decided at the district level that it would be advantageous for us to bring back one of our IT specialists that was previously a Bosse's hire. Bosse's has changed how they allow districts to purchase those individuals that serve as one FTE. And we would have been forced to perhaps have two or three people serve in the role that is now being filled by one person. So we chose to work with the person, hopefully the person that we have, to fill that need. They're very familiar with our district and our needs and our faculty and students. And so we felt that bringing that position back in-house was the best choice for our district. Moving down to guidance, you'll see a change in that line. We previously, in 16-17, we had a school counselor in our federal grant, so it would not have been reflected here in the general fund. And we have since added that position back to the budget. Additionally, in 16-17, we added a career and college counselor. So those numbers have shifted. And moving down to the very next line, or next couple of lines, you'll see that there's a reduction in the social worker line. And so really what we've done is we've just changed the individual that's being funded through the federal grants. So we still have a social worker, it's just funded differently now. Co-curricular, you'll see in this line, there is an increase because with the additional state aid, we did want to move back to the ability to fund the team leader stipends for our buildings, and that's reflected there. Athletics, you'll see a decrease. Last fiscal, we added significantly to the supply line to replenish our outdated or worn-out uniforms. And now we've moved to a cycle of replacement, and therefore we're able, we're able to reduce that line moving forward. And then finally, transportation, we've included the purchase of two full-size buses as part of the general fund expenditure in response to the transportation study that we had completed. So if you were paying attention earlier, you heard me state- So if you were paying attention earlier, you heard me state that we were going to purchase two mid-size buses out of our reserve. That reserve is slowly dwindling, and we would not be able to purchase all of our new transportation needs out of that reserve. So, building a new reserve, taking out of that reserve some of the remaining funds to purchase those mid-size buses, and then additionally, in the general fund line, wanting to hold the budget rather consistent, we've added those buses into the general fund. Any of you that know me, you know I'm completely transparent. Part of the reason for adding those buses to the general fund, which is quite unusual for this district, is that it really holds a budget line there. So as we move forward, my hope is that in future years, we'll be able to get back to purchasing buses just from the reserve. But by having this line in the general fund budget, we're not seeing spikes in increases in taxes, we're not seeing big dips in the budget. Instead, we're holding it at a constant. And my planning is that in future fiscals, we won't have the buses in that line anymore. However, it will offset future salary increases and benefit increases without seeing the spikes or dips in our budget. Page five. I'm just going to skim over that because I touched on all the additions, and I've given you dollar amounts which were reflected on the previous page, so allow you to read that in your leisure.
Can I just add something here? Four years ago, this night, tonight, basically, we were cutting seven-hundred-twenty-two-thousand dollars from the budget. Three years ago, we were cutting four-hundred-twenty-two-thousand dollars from the budget. Two years ago, we find the state finally ended the gap elimination adjustment halfway, and so we've started to get some of that revenue back from the state. And so this board made the decision to implement pre-K along with some other things. And then last year, and that's kind of that old top section, then last year, we added the career college counselor. And then you can see that we're able to, this year, make more investments. So it's been quite a swing in the last five years in Truantsburg as far as going from having to cut the budget, lots and lots of several positions, and summer hours, and everywhere else, and now we're able to invest. So it's a good thing. And so, moving forward to make these investments sustainable is really critical. Whoops. The end. No, no.
Page six is another prescribed page by the state. It's the official school district budget notice. Again, I'll just bring your attention to some of the key areas on this notice. You'll notice that second line down on the left, it's noted there, the decrease from budget to budget is actually a negative thirteen thousand better than an increase. And even decreasing in, as I previously stated, we have many program enhancements or additions. Moving down to letter A, the proposed levy to support the total budgeted amount. We're moving forward with a proposed levy at ten point eight million. I'll talk about that a little bit more in a moment. Moving down to letter G, the state prescribes about an eight-step formula to figure out the two percent tax cap. Many of you know it's not really two percent. And our actual calculation this year allowed the district to go out at ten point nine million on that levy. And when we received the second runs from state aid, we met as administrative team, we were able to add additional program enhancements, and we felt at that time, we had an obligation to both round out our program offerings, but at the same time, we could reduce that levy by a hundred thousand dollars for our taxpayers and avoid having a more significant increase on the levy. So, moving further down, you'll see the spending dollars by component area, and your attention would be in the very middle column. That's the budget proposed for seventeen, eighteen, and those are the total dollar amounts. Again, I'll bring your attention to the program component, which is nineteen point seven million. Again, the largest amount hitting program, which is most appropriate. One of the last items, we're required to list a proposition that's not included in the total budgeted amount, and that proposition is for the two mid-size school buses at a hundred and twenty thousand. Moving to page seven, the fiscal accountability summary. This too is provided by the state, based on information that they collect from us throughout the school year and previous school years. And I think one of the most important highlights to look at, this is highlighting our general education cost versus our special education expenses. And if you look, you can compare our district to a similar district. And you'll see our general education expense is ten thousand one hundred and forty-four per pupil, whereas a similar district, their expenses are at eleven thousand fifty-one. Again, when comparing special education, our expense hovers around twenty-two-nine, and comparable districts are at thirty-one-three. And then finally, if you move to the very bottom, our total expenses per pupil, when you compare, and it's, you can see that at our school districts, it's, our school district is twenty thousand eight hundred and seventy-five. A similar school district is twenty-one thousand four seventy-one, and in New York State, the average is twenty-two. So overall comparison, our district is doing really well, we're being very responsible fiscally. Page eight is information about students with disabilities. I'll bring your attention to the very bottom. You can see where it's highlighted, it says, "School-age students with disabilities classification rate." And you can see that Truantsburg, although our expenses per pupil are less than other districts, we do have a slightly higher percentage when compared to a similar district and compared to the New York State average. We're at fifteen point two percent. Keeping in mind, that number is from fifteen, sixteen. The state is always at least a year behind. Page nine is the property tax cap that I've already spoken of. This is most useful to our community, and that you can see a comparison for the levy in sixteen-seventeen compared to what we're proposing for seventeen, eighteen. On the far left, you can see, I spoke of the ten point nine that our district could go out at, which represents a two-point-five-two percent increase over our current fiscal. And we have reduced that to a one-point-five-eight percent increase over our current fiscal, therefore, asking our community to approve a levy in the amount of ten point eight million. What does that mean in terms of the estimated tax rate? We're estimating, all things staying exactly the same, that it will be approximately eighteen fifty-five per one thousand dollars of assessed value, and that represents a twenty-nine cent increase over our current fiscal. And I think that concludes.
Anyone want to talk about the tax cap? We don't want to. Vote on qualifications, have to live in the district. T that takes care of acts and T ballot?
Yeah, I think that's all, both leisure reading for the individuals.
Yeah, and being printed, it's up there.
And so we'll end up with saying that our vote is Tuesday, May sixteenth, at Ulysses Historical Society, from noon to nine p.m.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
This really is a summary presentation. And we mail the brochures tomorrow.
Okay, so now the question says that will conclude the annual budget hearing. Okay, and we will move on to our regular meeting. Okay, have we had any additions or corrections to the minutes? Then they will stand as sent. Okay, at this point, we might survive an open forum if anybody will be interested in asking any questions regarding...
We should accept the minutes.
We did.
We just did. We voted I. I thought we...
No additions to questions.
No additions or corrections, that's right.
So they stand as ready.
Got you.
Right. No, I'm...
I'm sorry.
You want to vote on it?
No, 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 no. Happy to go. Open forum.
The surplus of voting. Okay, so we are now moving on to the open forum. If anyone has any questions or comments, if they would like, yes ma'am?
Yes, there's a lot of really good information in that presentation, but I would like to refer to the Fact Finder information on the website, and I have some questions there regarding our budget over the years. It says on the Fact Finder that our restricted fund balance has increased three million over the last three years, and that we have our unexpendited surplus is at or above five point eight percent for the last three years, and it has exceeded the state property law for the last five years. So I'm a little curious as to why we're exceeding the real property tax minimum.
I'm having trouble hearing you, so did you get a chance to...
I did.
Yeah. We can keep it up.
So the state does set the limitation at four percent in unallocated fund balance. However, I believe there is legislation at this point to look to see if that could, if potentially be increased for districts. We've been pretty comfortable keeping it between four and six percent. Some of that unallocated fund balance covers us through the summer for, before we have a new revenue stream to cover summer spending. Additionally, I think if you put it in terms of home ownership, you would never want to spend your budget or your savings down to the very penny. And so, when there is additional fund balance, we do like to move that into a reserve and offset future taxpayer expenses such as a capital project, so...
That all makes perfect sense, but basically, at the current time and for the last five years, you're not actually adhering to the law.
To the four percent?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you would find that most districts are not.
No one does. No one does. Well, I would say it's rare.
There are districts that do, but...
Well, let's say it's the majority don't. And in fact, they're talking about raising the minimum to ten percent. They're talking about giving school districts the ability to have a month's worth of spending in reserve every year. I think it's the nature of minimizing the volatility to the tax levy over a period of time. At least that's what I've learned in so many years of doing it. It looks crazy from the outside that you purposely build in a million, you know, so many millions of dollars in there. It's just the nature of the way these, because we need stability. Because you see what happens when we get a cut like we had over the years. I've been on board, you're letting seven to ten people go, and then now we're bringing, now we're looking for those same people to come back. And if we kept them, we'd have a much better school district four years down the road. So it looks, it is unorthodox from, I think, just from a layperson's perspective. It is from my perspective, even being on the board, but it is the nature of public school financing that, I think the dry-in was close to ten percent over last year, and it made a little bit of a paper in that. Several years ago, they almost hauled us off to jail for, you know, to have a three million extra. So my sense is that this is something that's hard for, just to rationalize, but it's built in for the, I think, maybe I'm talking crazy, but it's built in for stability, like all of these seems safe redundancies are.
And we work with our auditors, and they tell us that, you know, it's quite common to have four to six, and some are even greater, in many districts that's really dependent upon their board. I think you would also, if you look further, you'll see when people have been written up, their defense is just that, that they need to have more than one month's spending set aside in case of emergencies. If we were to have a boiler break, you know, where do you get that funding if you don't have that extra percentage set aside inaccessible, so...
Well, I agree, you would not want to run into red.
Yeah.
And nobody wants that.
We just don't want to cut it that close.
I think it's also, in some ways, an attempt to be able to compensate for what's going on in auditing, because that's inconsistent. So, and by not knowing, you know, what your actual income is going to be, it's not predictable. So therefore, if an individual school can have a pad, that makes us much less vulnerable to that kind of volatility. Okay, other questions? Yes, sir?
Kudos to the presentation. I just wanted to address it, because we deal with the same thing in Canada as far as the extra money in reserve. Reserve is absolutely invisible. As you were mentioning, I just stood up so I could see people there. They were talking about letting teachers go. We didn't have to let teachers go. When things got real tough with the gap elimination act, it was really a tough time. We had more than our percentage. We've since gotten to the percentage, but it's really tough. And when our boilers broke, when we had floods down in Canada, and we go, that reserve was essential, because the female money doesn't come in insurance money. You've got to keep your business, you've got to educate the children. So it was really good. And our teachers went through, we were lucky not to let teachers go, but our teachers were also very responsive in the fact that they didn't take a raise, you may remember. We appreciated that. But that reserve is essential. It does look big, but I agree that the state is looking at it. My daughter-in-law is the Assistant Secretary of Education, so I give her... But thanks, I appreciate it, thank you. And nice job.
Thank you.
I'm going to take this back.
Thank you.
And long done. Any other questions?
Along that same topic, because as you said, that the appropriated reserve fund is difficult to understand.
Yes.
So I think what the state tried to do with the SB fifty-four was to more clearly define where that money is in our budget, and how we can save it going forward. From the benefit of that over-budgeting in years past, where we had that extra millions, allowed us to have the security of being able to put money in reserve funds. So, looking at the budget as it's presented in the simple lines, it looks like you were spending down the appropriated reserve fund to a near minimum of like fifty-five thousand left. From three hundred thousand, you used three hundred thousand from last year, it was six hundred thousand, then you used...
That's not actually a reserve.
No, not a reserve.
Okay.
I'm sorry if I said reserve. The appropriated fund balance.
Yeah.
Was six hundred thousand.
Yes.
And then you used three hundred thousand last year, so that the balance was three hundred thousand. This year, it's showing three hundred thousand, you're using two hundred and forty-five. So it's not a reserve, but it's been that stable line that's been moved across budgets. So that's not a sustainable line going forward, correct?
It is a sustainable line, and it's not really, how can I explain it? It's different than a reserve or a debt service fund. So, in layman's terms, if you think in terms of, you have your mortgage payment and all of your monthly expenses, and then separately, you have your savings account. So you have money coming in every month that offsets your expenses, and hopefully, you have some extra money and you can move it over to your savings account. That appropriated line doesn't exist over here in the savings accounts. It is simply a line that is moved forward every year that allows me to keep the revenue stream at a level that adds, in this case, I think it was, what, two hundred and forty-five thousand? It allows me to keep the revenue stream higher by two hundred and forty-five thousand. If I had to, if I couldn't keep that line there, it never really gets spent. So it just gets moved forward year to year, because somewhere in the budget, lines are overstated by at least two hundred and forty-five thousand. If we spend it, truly spend all of that, then the next year moving forward, I now have to find two hundred and forty-five thousand. And the only place I have to go to find that is to go to the community or cross my fingers and hope it comes from the state.
So is that what's going to happen next year? Because it was three hundred thousand previously, if I'm reading this correctly, and you're using two hundred and forty-five...
Not using it.
Here, I'm sorry, you're moving that forward, the two hundred and forty-five forward.
Check, check, not using it, still there next year.
Okay, okay. And the two reserve funds that you've set up, so you're anticipating that somewhere in the next, are there three, ten years?
Yeah, ten.
Five years?
Ten.
So somewhere in your budgets for the next ten years, you're hoping to find an extra six million dollars that would fund those?
Not necessarily. Those are just, because we established them and they're for ten years. Over a ten-year period, I have no idea how much fund balance there may or may not be. So it's nice to have that flexibility to say, maybe next year, we have five hundred thousand. Maybe even more specialized placements were not needed outside of our district. So we saved maybe three hundred thousand in that line. So we saved maybe 300,000 in that line for students with disabilities.
Another example is the state of New York, financial transactions are very slow and I forget the exact number, but this year we got a letter saying, you know what, we went back to 2002, '03. I'm thinking it's something like that. And we owe you $136,000. Something like that. Yeah, so, so...
So that money comes in.
Put it in the reserves.
And I don't have an expense for it. So it's, it's nice to have that flexibility. And then it's always very public. I come back to the board and say, you know, it's, it's close to the end of May or early June and I say, you know, we did well this year. We didn't have to purchase these special education slots. We were able to reduce a run because we found that we had fewer students out in outer Mecklenburg or wherever. And so it allows those underspent lines for us to move that money to someplace where we can later use it to offset the expenses for taxpayers.
And if it's capital, it's leveraged. I mean, if we get $100,000 in there, it adds a lot more state aid when you do a capital project. So that really get a lot more bang for the buck.
But the amounts are just set so that we don't have, I mean, a 10-year span is pretty far out. And so it allows us to continue just to move money into that. But the current bill on the equipment reserve, its life expectancy is over. And so now at this point, we can't add anymore to that. We can only spend it down. So I, I don't want to be in a situation where we have to borrow for buses because I don't, I don't think we're there yet and, and that just costs us more money. So if we can pay for them and then collect the aid over a five-year period, that's a real advantage to this district. So I would like to continue purchasing buses in that way.
In the Medicaid line, it's because of decreased needs of specialized services that are billable to Medicaid for our students.
It's, it's services that our students are eligible for. Those same students are eligible for Medicaid and so Medicaid reimburses us for a percentage of those expenses. And so we recently started billing Medicaid, I want to say, two years ago. And we're starting to bill more and more services which generates additional revenue for the district.
That's anticipated. We can go back up to 13 months, so part of that project could be, we have, you know, five months with the billing that we're waiting on some little thing.
Right. And who files that for us?
We work with Voces. Angie and I also have a big role in it now, so it's collective effort.
Yeah, it's a team effort. It's really complicated. And actually, it's in response to the auditor finding report from, what was it, 2010? One of the findings there was that the district needed to start going for that revenue source and so we're doing it.
Well, we had previously...
Yeah, we dropped it though.
Yeah, we had done it previously, but to do it in-house, we were paying more for a person to do it than the money we were getting back.
Well, we figured out how to get a little bit more money.
Right, so if you do it through Voces, then you do get a little bit more.
That's not limited just to school, school seller. The billing process for Medicaid is very, very complicated and depending upon how much personnel you have to commit to that you're liable to be making pennies.
I know, that's why we worked collecting for several years.
It was costing more to collect.
Costing the district more to get money.
Right, yeah. We're paying a dollar, 50 to get a dollar back.
It wasn't paying. Sort of like making a penny that the government does now.
Yeah.
It costs more to make that penny.
So that's, that's a value of a Voces service for us.
I just wondered if, if the, the needs for the students that would be reimbursed for Medicaid have diminished for our district?
No.
Or is the reimbursement rate for Medicaid...
I would say that if anything, our, the rate that we're getting back for Medicaid, I would anticipate in the coming years would grow. I think that number looks low because there's probably some lag in the billing in there. And over the last two years, we maximized our Medicaid billing. Certainly our needs have gone down. We're really trying to, you know, see if it's worth it for all of this work and maximize our billing. So I'd anticipate that, I think it was 42, probably would go up to closer to 50, I guess at that.
It's really just a projection, hard to estimate.
In the library position you spoke of, I missed that. Did you say you're adding personnel to the library?
That's for summer school component for our...
Oh, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you. Instead, we have no agenda changes. Okay. We've already done our presentation and no correspondence, so we move on to the event duration.
Well, a couple of things. I'd like to ask John and Josh to talk about Screenagers because it was a big deal. And then I also want to ask Josh to talk about his community learn that's coming up before the board will read again. That's quite an effort that's been article in Free Press. And I think it's better to just hear without escape from Josh. So, but talk about Screenagers first because all of our, all of our 5 through 12, some of the, some of the presentations?
Yes. So we were approached by a community parent and was brought to both the middle school and the high school counseling offices as well as the PTO about presenting a viewing for the documentary Screenagers, which was to pose, in our opinion, a fairly balanced view of students and adults' time spent face-to-face with a screen as opposed to face-to-face with one another, opening up the floor for conversation. So we had an AM screening for 5 through 8. We went over to the high school auditorium, watched the movie, and the teachers of the viewing, some debrief questions with the students in the classrooms. And overall, we've had some very positive conversations throughout the kids. They're very quick to pick up the, well, that the parents were asking the kids to limit themselves, but the parents weren't necessarily adhering to the same, same standards. And so...
Wait, what were you saying, Josh? I'm sorry.
There's been a lot of that going on.
What? And, but, but the kids have also been asking really good questions of the teachers that just tried to understand. They said, well, I'm not on my phone all day. And the, and the conversations have moved into, well, does working on the computer in the class, does that count? Watching TV, does that count? And it's really opened their eyes to that whole concept of what exactly is screen time? But also, as, as a family, how do we keep that balance? The whole middle school cheered when one mom said, I got so fed up with your, with her kid on the phone, she threw the phone out the window. You wouldn't think you'd have 300 kids go, yeah! But they were, they thought it was a pretty good move. So it was really, it was really, it was well received. And I know the high school had the PM viewing.
So, so we watched it as a high school in the afternoon and then had, at least one of our counselors was working with English classes throughout the day, the following day, doing debriefing and discussions. And again, similar response. The kids thought it was really great. One of the things that was interesting feedback is that the, the movie did focus a lot on the rules and the negative, like the negative side of having screens in your life. And they, the kids brought up, you know, some of the positive things that happened because you have screens and, you know, when you're working with computers in class and things that you can do. And they didn't spend a lot of time talking about that in the movie. So it's just an interesting give and take. But, you know, as I said to the kids when we started the movie, it's, the goal here is to get you thinking and how does this impact your life? The, the next part of it was that we did also do a screening that evening for parents. And we, surprisingly, on an 80-degree, beautiful sunny evening at 7 o'clock showed a movie in the auditorium and had probably one of the best turnouts that we've had for a parent program in years. I would estimate that we probably had 50, 60 parents in the auditorium. And the feedback to that was, was wonderful. Great conversation afterwards. I think we stuck around, I'm going to say about half an hour afterwards, 45 minutes. We stood, I, I stood up front and just kind of fielded questions and the counselors were all there and fielded questions and talked about a lot of these things. So it's, it's great conversation. It's, it's great to be a community that's talking about it. And as a high school, we're talking about some ideas to implement some additional instructional opportunities for the kids to address it because it needs to be, we need to continue the dialogue. We need to be intentional about teaching social responsibility and technology is a big part of that, so.
I mean, when, when Neil and the librarians were here, they were talking about media literacy and online responsibility. And it's exactly what has to emerge in the curriculum, that there's a responsible way to do this and when we can engage the community in that conversation and the parents and the kids, that's the home run, right? I mean, at some point, it'd be nice that it was woven in constantly into the curriculum about that because, you know, a lot of times, don't worry, really, these kids are figuring it out on their own. I mean, I think a lot of, you get everything from, you know, lockdown, throw the phone out to just, well, you know, my parents didn't understand when I listened to Led Zeppelin and so people just wash their hands of it, right? It becomes that thing, that's a generational thing. And, and so having that conversation forces people to sort of get away from those extremes and say, well, whether you like it or not, you have to manage this, right? Exactly. It's going to manage us.
It was good. I, I watched it.
So this, and this won't go from a parent? A PTO discussion or just a parent contacted you and said, hey, let's do this?
Yeah.
It's really a nice one. We can be responsive like that, not, not for nothing, but we're not always the most responsive with some of these things when it comes to curriculum change, right? So that's really good.
So Josh, community learn?
Community learn. So previous years, it's been community read. This year, we, it took a different flavor and, you know, it was presented during the library presentation as seventh grade students, what was that? Seventh grade students this year, opposite every other day in their ELA class, have been going for, to the library and for the library media literacy. And part of the spinoff was that we charged our seventh graders with planning, organizing, and implementing the community read project this year. And through the process, they decided that we were going to focus on Kid President. If you've watched any of the videos around that Kid President has produced, that he had a very positive message in multiple different areas that they thought would make the school better for the students to take an active role in. And they also, through a lot of discussion, decided since we're not reading a book, we would be watching lots of different videos. And these videos are short and sweet and different subject areas that are much more aptly named community learn. And so the community learn this year have, we have four sections, the seventh grade ELA. Each section has had multiple teams. We have an activities team, we have a lesson plan team, we have activities team, we have, we had a, I think it was a public, advertising team. Each of these different teams had to develop a piece so they can get the information out to teachers or solicit feedback from them to help develop a lesson plan for a teacher to teach. And the kids were saying, I had no idea that this is so much work to write a lesson. It's every day. Yes, I do. Other kids had to schedule times to meet with me to see if we can do certain activities during the day. They had to think about how many adults we needed to supervise and what would be fair and accessible to all the students in terms of like rotations. If we did some sort of like a recess game in the gym, how do we get all the kids to be able to participate? They had to propose spending budgets. So if we want to buy these supplies, which ones are we allowed to buy through the school? Which ones do we have to approach the PTO about? Which ones? And so they, they really had to put a lot of thought into how a school runs. And we've been nothing less than impressed. They've been sending out weekly, daily updates to the teachers to prep them and get them kind of excited about what's coming. So it's, it's a different twist from having a committee of teachers meeting outside of the school day to plan this and then go back to their colleagues and say, this is what we're going to do for the students. But this is the students saying, this is what we want to do with one another. And adults, this is how you can help us out. So it's, it's been a really great process and we are certainly looking to do that again next year. So, so dates, it starts next, at the end of next week, varies over to following. It's done before DC and after state testing. And we also will have a kid principal day too, where we all have a shadow for the day learning because we have a kid president, kid principal, so it's a kickoff.
Josh?
Yes?
Is the community involved in this in any way or is this just out of school?
This is, this is more the middle school community this year. Kind of laying our foundation and then seeing how we might be able to expand it next year with the next group of kids coming up.
Thanks.
I think it'll take the flavor of each cohort as it goes through.
When you suspect, yeah.
And the time, I mean, big election, every time the president, kids thinking about government and blah, 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 and parents are crying, everybody's upset. Kid president sounds like a pretty good idea sometimes. Good. That's right. The flavor of the class is sort of nice then, right?
And so I'll, I'll forward on the information if there's any activities that you can be a part of.
Thanks.
At least the, the kid president, kid principal piece, maybe you're in for that.
Oh, they're welcome to be kid president too.
No, kid president, the board.
That's right.
I also have some information to share from our students that went to the UN.
Oh, yes.
Yes, that's right.
So this is information regarding the program you, I'll approve of a field trip. We sent 14 students to the United Nations over spring break. And including this back is the program from that event as well as samples of the student work that the students presented at the UN. We've actually had, over the course of this year, 18 students presenting in the UN at three different instances. This event was something that we've been working with a consultant on, who, the individual at the front, on the front cover, the moderator, Richard Noden, is a retired teacher from South Seneca who connected with Jane George. And Jane is one who is great at picking up on social causes in education in her classroom. And in this instance, during spring break, we sent 14 students, most of whom, all but one, were freshmen and one senior, who was kind of the keynote for our group. But they were focusing on substance abuse, sharing youth voices on substance abuse. And the, some of the students spoke, some of the students shared artwork, there's poetry, there's stories in there. And I encourage you to read that. I'll also forward Tina, to Tina, the link that she can send on to all of you that actually has the, the webcast of the event when they actually spoke at this forum. So it's, it was pretty exciting for the kids. It was not just the kids who are super high flyers. It was a very diverse group of kids that spoke about things that were very passionate. And this came from a project that all the students in Jane's ninth grade English classes did. But there were a couple of exceptional works that were pulled together and we were able to take kids on a pretty amazing, for an amazing experience, yeah. So just wanted to share that. And I'll, I'll share the link to the presentations, but it's very exciting.
Part of the richness of T-Berg, truly. Our students get great experiences.
Lots of opportunities.
Lots of things.
Sorry, I scratched it.
Yeah, it was disgusting.
They also, one of the other keynote speakers that went with our group was the mayor of Eppeta.
I noticed.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's pretty...
Good, good company.
And they could tell he was an adult?
Yeah. The guy that says youth voices on substance...
I know, but it's, he looks like he's one of the kids.
But he's taken about as, I mean, about as, about as radical a stance as any public official's been taking on, on this open thing. And he was, I saw him in the comments today. They, there was his base, they were letting addicts come in and use. This is, this is going to be a big deal for society to face the reality of what this looks like when you see it. It's, and we might as well talk about it because it's not going away ignoring it. And so the fact that the world is struggling with this, this, this is playing out in our, in our little, you know, hole-in-the-air area.
Yeah.
We've got as big of an epidemic with this issue as the rest of the world does. It's a big deal. This is really well done. It's so great to see you guys doing this.
The amazing thing with this is that it's bringing awareness to our, within our freshman class who are at the very cusp of making some of these choices.
Well, and you see their lives impacted by their parents being addicts, right? This is not an easy situation for anybody.
One of the other pieces of data that I will share hopefully in the coming months, if I have an opportunity to share, we have the results from our youth development survey that Jen Hassel's...
Steinbach.
Steinbach.
Is this the one that says we smoke more pot than everybody else in the...
Actually, the results came back this year and Truismberg has shown some amazing progress in improving things.
Excellent.
Jen and I sat down, spent a lot of time, we did the day-to-day over at T S D Voces with some of our staff. And Jen was our, our data person for our group, for Truismberg. She has a vested interest here. And, and it was really exciting for all of us that were looking at the data because there's a lot of, the, the risk factors are going down, the positive factors are going up, the, the level of use that we're seeing among students is declining. And so there's a lot of really good messages, uh, messages out there. And we've been working on ways to get those messages to the students as well. Because trying to, to work on those social norm campaigns to help, to help them understand that, no, not everybody in Terrenceburg smokes pot.
That's exactly.
We really don't. There's a, there's a large majority of kids who aren't doing drugs and aren't using things that we don't want them to use, so.
So we get a presentation about that here, right?
Yeah, it usually comes in the fall.
They come and talk to you.
But maybe earlier.
But I have, but Jen put together an amazing slideshow for us that actually shows a great summary of our data, so.
Can I get it into the recording? Is this hard to put into the next recording?
Yeah, I'd really like to see that.
It'd be a quick presentation and the, the work's already done, Jen did it for me, so.
Okay.
She can watch. There you go.
Okay, any other administrating? Or reporting, or administrating?
Done with the district.
I think we're good.
Thanks. Then, can I talk to Jenna?
So move second.
Move to a judge.
No, that's not looking for no business, which is not there, so. So moving on to second open forum, if any other questions or just that.
Great, surprise!
I didn't get to speak when you talked about Screen Agers and I didn't have the opportunity to go to the program at Ithaca last evening.
Oh, yeah.
I just wanted to see how that program went. And I must say that percentage-wise, we had a better turnout than Ithaca did. I don't know if Ithaca showed it to their students during the day because there were quite a few students there.
Okay.
But what was of interest was they did have a, um, forum afterwards that took place on the stage and, um, the assistant, um, principal led the discussion, had questions. And they had their school psychologist, two students, a parent, um, their IT person, and a doctoral candidate at Cornell, which might be a good reference for you going forward. Um, and he pointed out that the movie, he, he was collecting data while it was being shown, had thirty-two negative points about it and only three positives.
Wow, interesting.
Which was an interesting statistic. But I, I think, listening to the discussion that you just had about the drug issue in Ithaca, that people are seeing that more clearly now because of hindsight and how critical it's become, I would ask that this district really work with Mr. King and the discussion we had after the meeting the other night, that this really become part of our curriculum and that we're in the forefront of it and that we're more proactive in having this discussion with our students and our families about the addictive qualities, um, of what's happening with social media and how important that is. So that's just, you know, that was part of the discussion last night in the forum and by this, um, doctoral student, um, from Cornell. It was interesting to hear his take in response to the questions that were asked, as well as the students, the two students that they had. Which one was, um, Mira Frostclack?
Oh, yeah.
Who, I think she's the, she's senior.
She's on a council that Lavelle Brown has.
Yes.
So Special Leadership Council.
Yeah, and then a student from LAX that was there. So it, it was, um, it, it was good to have that forum afterwards. And I would really ask that, um, I don't know how many of the board members got to see this movie, but I would ask that you really, really, really consider, um, how important it is to have this become part of our curriculum to keep our students healthy with this.
And I'll, I'll, I'll share, and if I, if I can tag on to what you're saying. There's been a lot of great ideas generated since that movie came through, just in conversations with staff. On a very related topic, as I had shared earlier, we did have a team of teachers that did some action research on instructional technology. And one of the things that they came out with was the idea of implementing some kind of seminar, like a freshman seminar where kids could, could address a lot of these things. I had a great conversation with our health, health teacher about tying that in with our health curriculum and some capacity. So there's a lot of ideas being generated. It's not anything that we're going to implement, you know, for next year, but, but a lot of great ideas. And I think there's a lot of momentum moving forward to do some really creative things with our staff to, to address this, so. Absolutely agree.
In the part of the drug conversation that you're having, another discussion, we went to hear last night, Mauro went here on the, as a health professional, um, to listen to, you know, my husband's work and what I was doing is, um, to become better informed. And you miss things the first time around because I was really shocked by some of the information that was shared that night. And then you forgot what they said in the next section, think, oh my gosh, I missed that. What was that? So I caught more bits of it, you know, seeing it last night. But again, talking tonight at the forum that happened at the Firehouse tonight, um, about the need of housing and just economic issues and talking about, um, the drug issue here is the impact that the community's going to have socially with the need for more foster families and what's going to happen with the students and the children that we have in our community because of parents. And hearing on the news that there were ten overdoses in, um, our community, not Troonspur, but in the Ithaca community in the month of March. And what's happening with those families and those children. So it's going to impact us as a school district as those children, you know, come up through the ranks. So, um, drug addiction is not new. It, it's the, um, it's the crisis that we're in with it now. And I don't want us to be in a crisis with the social media addiction problems that are there. So that's, that's the end of my soapbox.
Sounds like Penn State's strength is already going that way.
Working on it in the high school.
Boy, you've got a good.
Yep, you've got a hand on it.
Could I add something to that?
Certainly.
Please. We've been dealing with a lot of this with Central New York School Boards Association as well. And I think an additional factor to be aware of is that many kids, particularly athletes, are prescribed opiates for injuries and such. And that we need as adults to keep an eye on how easily that slips right into your system and becomes not a medical help, but a medical hazard. A lot of the kids we see using opiates.
Got to start the doctor. Okay, what forum? Anybody have any?
Just, again, a reminder that, uh, May thirty-first, the annual, uh, CNY, Central New York School Boards Association Dinner. And Lavelle Brown, who is, by the way, I think most of us are aware, the superintendent of the.
That's a big day, yeah.
Will be giving the presentation. So I urge as many of you as possible to go along. I'll be driving up and can easily take three people with me if you'd like to rejoice.
And so that was May thirty-first, right?
May thirty-first at Welch Allen in St. Els.
I'll just comment, it's nice to have three people running for the board. Just a few years ago, Michelle had to write in her name to get, to support it. So we're.
We did twenty-two hours.
So we, I just want to say as a board member, please, that we have three candidates for two positions. This is a nice, this is a nice situation.
Thank you for letting me.
Yes, thank you for letting me.
Okay, I need a motion to adjourn for executive session and Mr. Beatty matters ready to collect the negotiations.
So we'll move.